Test. 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 Test, test, test.
Good evening, everyone. Welcome to our Norwich organizational regular meeting. It's my privilege to start the meeting off, but I'll be handing it over very quickly. And before we get rolling here, I'd like to welcome Gina de Cagnan, our board member. Good evening, everyone. Welcome to our Norwich organizational regular meeting. It's my privilege to start the meeting off, but I'll be handing it over very quickly. And before we get rolling here, I'd like to welcome Gina de Cagnan, our board member.
Thanks for having me.
And our first order of business is to appoint a chair. And so I will entertain nominations for board chair.
I want a second.
Okay. Then we'll vote on the nomination that's before us. All in favor of Garrett as chair? Congratulations, Garrett.
Thank you, Garrett.
It's all yours now.
Oh, I guess I only.
Sorry.
That was Jane free. She's sorry if I'm on the, you might put someone on Garrett so you can just pick me in.
Yep, I just.
All right. Thank you. Okay, so appointment of vice chair is our next item. Do I have a nomination for vice chair?
Neil, I would nominate Michael Coster for vice chair.
Do we have a second on that one or any other nominations? I should do a second for the nomination.
No, you don't. So that's the beauty. Nominations do not require a second.
Okay. We have any other nominations? All right. So if there's a vote, Paul is in favor.
I could do your job last year, so I understand.
All right. So my vote is our vice chair. I'm tired of seeing our appointment of a secretary. Who's that?
I would like to nominate Gina and keeping the tradition of the newbie gets to be the secretary.
I'll give my thing, Gina. So my first year, I actually took notes because we were on Zoom for COVID. And I thought we're supposed to submit all the notes at the end of the meeting. And I was all nervous because I wasn't getting everything, but the secretary actually does.
Okay. What is the responsibility of secretary? It's an honorary thing.
Essentially, if the chair and the vice chair are absent, then you get.
That is true.
Okay. All right. Do I have a vote for Gina for vice chair? Right. That was also unanimous. Okay, on to committees. Usually what I think we do with this is, is why don't we go through the committees tonight? Maybe just to discuss them and then maybe next meeting, we actually. We're going to be in favor of actually giving a little bit of thought just kind of how we're gaining being new. And on my new computer, so Gina, what we do get and what everyone is, we actually have an Google sheet that has all of the responsibilities. So what I would say is once you get your email address, ask Brianne or gives access. Brianne gives access to that. That's actually helpful because it actually goes through all of the board positions for the entire SAU, Dresden and Norwich. And that also has some color coding and whatnot to kind of give a sense for when they're active and when they're not active and the general level of effort.
Okay. So like if you're a tax accountant, for instance, you probably don't want to be on the superintendent's review committee because they need it at the same time. So just it helps you look at stuff like that. Okay. Thank you.
But just to go over them a little bit quickly is maybe just giving a quick discussion. And this also helps, I think. So as far as the negotiations committees, we have both a teacher's negotiation and a support staff negotiations. Both those will be active again this year, right? For Norwich, correct.
Yes.
And aren't listed, so.
Yes.
Yeah, I'm not sure if Brianne.
They're not, it's not a comprehensive list.
Just these ones. I think it was just maybe some examples. So those ones, and those will get active in the fall.
Okay.
Is that correct? I'm kind of looking at Neil over my shoulder.
By October.
By October for both of those. And what we typically do with that is, is so on those boards, last year it was Neil and Michael around the teachers negotiation. And then Neil and Lily were on the support staff negotiation. It is a good one for different people to participate on to make sure that we're kind of taking the knowledge through, but also having at least a person that's been doing it for a long time. And then the other kind of ones that get time consuming over the budget, last year that was Neil and myself. On that one, you could have three people in this committee. We typically try to have two per committee. But we could, the budget, at least that last year, again, that gets busy kind of right coming out of the summer break. Usually kind of just the schools starting, starting of our initial meetings to get the read on. But you know, the quick model that the finance department puts together and then kind of over the course of the fall. And then it gets kind of, you know, really kind of hot, heavy in the October, November time period. The other one is, let's just, I'm just going through some of them, policy. So I do that at the SAU level with Ben and a couple others on the Dresden board. That one actually meets fairly frequently, one or two times a month. And it's a lot of work just because of the costly updating policies. And but it's all, you know, Ryan's at that meeting, Jay's at that meeting. I'm trying to think of other committees. And of course, we have all the Dresden committees as well as your negotiations, your budget. As far as policy.
And SAU has sort of the same too, so.
But it's helpful, I think, probably look at that Google spreadsheet to kind of go on. As far as the other Norwich ones, other than negotiations, budget. And then we do have a Norwich technically policy committee, which is just me. It's basically just kind of help, Ryan's helps kind of pull stuff with between me, Jay and Ryan. Making sure that we try to make sure that everything we're doing in Dresden is very consistent with the policy. And are there any other major committees for Norwich? I'm just saying.
There's the representative to the grant many for the MCS, the teacher grants.
That's right. Which Lily and you did.
And Michael, Michael took my spot. Yeah.
Okay, so Michael did that. So the ones that were missed, basically if you were just moving right into what Lily did, Lily was doing that one and then she was doing the negotiations for support staff.
That's the enrichment grant.
Yeah, there we go. I knew there was a fancy name.
And then the last one listed here, at least, is the BSBA representative, which currently Neil's been doing. Correct. Like it would be good if some, at some point, like that's one where we should have someone on that. And Neil's asked me, I've declined this year just because last year I got a little bit overheated, I think. Kind of this poor work with the state. But that's a good one. It's a very good group up there. And those were the ones that I was going to point you to with regards to some of the school board member stuff. You have to sign in for that stuff, don't you?
So I think you might be getting a little bit confused. So this role is basically a VSBA liaison role. So basically a board manager sort of de-cap what's going on with VSBA, what's going on with my failure during the website session. The other one, I assume the other one is actually a VSBA regional rep position. And I hold one of the two Windsor area seats currently for the next year and a half.
So the VS, sorry, VSBA representative, Neil, just because he's been on that. But then that's the Windsor rep rules, the one that I think.
Yeah, but I reached out to see if anybody wanted to run for that spot and nobody did. And then I.
Neil used to be the president of VSBA.
Okay.
So it's just, it's easy enough since I am on the VSBA, it just makes sense for me to be the rep for this board because I'm.
Right there. And just so you don't worry, the four chairs usually get together and look at where everyone is committee-wise so that no one's overburdened or committed to everything that's in spring and nothing involved. So and Ryan does a really good job of keeping, making sure that we're on track for that. So.
And do you like to leverage people's strengths?
We try.
For, yeah, I have an idea of something that would be good for me to be on given what I do, but I can share it there.
When's that meeting here? Do you think we'll do that before our next board meeting?
Yeah, probably like as soon as we elect all the chairs in the next week, we'll probably have a board chairs meeting.
So maybe.
Like this week. Yeah.
You know, assuming you're, I guess at this point, kind of we might default to the existing ones. But people of interest, maybe send me between, you know, older and less groups. Does that make sense as far as what things you might want to serve on? In that way, when we're kind of moving around chairs, we're not just flying along either and just putting people on things that they may not want to. Or reach out to me to do it too. You're right. I don't want to do this anymore. I do not do this or someone else should be on. Okay. Any other questions on committees? All right. So move on to the next item of our annual policy reminder for board members. These two policies here are the conflict of interest and the roles and duty of members. So again, I would just read these over. It's good to read these over once a year. Just to remind everybody both, look at these two policies just to make sure I'm back in mind.
Sean was kind enough to print a copy of the conflict of interest policy, which we ask the board members to sign. So if you're going to knock that out tonight, I can just bring it back to Ryan. So we pass this down. There are more signature lines than this.
Perfect. So that. And then I think I would also encourage everybody at some point too. It's always good at this time of year, the VSBA has excellent presentations on what being a board member is all about, all of that kind of thing. It's good to sometimes go back and look at those little webinars that they do. And you have to sign up for those now. So once I get these for Gina to pass her on, you have to actually log in to get some of those.
Yeah. So some of the VSBA website is now accessible for test, just to make sure that, you know, the right people are getting ready.
It used to be you could just click on them and get the things.
It'll take a little bit of time. So, you know, we had elections just yesterday. So it'll take a little bit of time for VSDA to get all those board members set up with accounts. But you'll get one.
Okay.
And then at that point, you have access to say, I will say that if you're looking for prior webinars, they might be available up to the VSBA's YouTube channel. They might, they might be there.
Okay. All right. So on to that, that's our election of officers and reorganization. You have a discussion on that item. Good there. Okay, we'll move on to our regular meeting now. So agenda reviews, if I have any additions, changes, whatnot to the existing agenda. Now stand, move on to our PTO report.
Have a comment?
Oh, sorry. I did totally skip the public comments section. Sorry. Are there any public comments? And sorry, am I on the Zoom? That was a. In that way, when we're kind of moving around chairs, we're not just flying along either and just putting people on things that they may not want to. Or reach out to me to do it too. You're like, I don't want to do this anymore. I'd rather not do this or someone else should be on. Okay. Um any other questions on committees? Um all right, so move on to the next item of our annual policy reminder for board members. Uh these two policies here are the conflict of interest and the roles and duty of members. Um so again, I would just read these over. It's good to read these over once a year. Um just to remind everybody both, but uh these two policies, just to make sure I'm back in mind.
Yeah, Sean was kind enough to print a copy of the conflict of interest policy, which we asked the board members to sign. So if you're going to knock that out tonight, I can just bring it back to Ryan. There are more signature lines of this.
Perfect. So that. Um and then I think I would also encourage everybody at some point too. It's always good at this time of year, the VSB has excellent presentations on. What being a board member is all about, all of that kind of thing. It's good to sometimes go back and look at those, there's little webinars that they do. Um and you have to sign up for those now. So once I get these for Gina to pass her on, you have to actually log in to get some of those.
Uh, yeah, so some of the VSB website is now um accessible for test, just to make sure that, you know, the right people are getting right information.
It used to be you could just click on them and get the things.
It'll take a little bit of time. Um so, you know, we had elections.
Right.
Uh just yesterday, so it'll take a little bit of time for VSDA to get all those board members set up. With accounts, but you'll get one.
Okay.
Um, okay. And then at that, we have access to say, I will say that if you're looking for prior um webinars, they might be available off of the VSDA's YouTube. Channel.
Oh, okay.
They might, they might be there.
Okay. All right. So on to that, that's our election of officers and reorganization. You have a discussion on that item. Good there. Okay, we'll move on to our regular meeting now. So agenda reviews, if I have any additions, changes, whatnot to the existing agenda. Now stand, move on to our PTO report.
Have a comment?
So. Oh, sorry, public comments, do we have any comments? Okay. Oh, sorry, I did totally skip the public comments section, sorry. Are there any public comments? It's, am I on the Zoom? That was a uh.
It's saying that you define to be a panel.
Okay.
That was your subconscious, Karen.
Okay. So any public comment here? Does anybody see anybody with the hands raised in the audience? I don't see. Right, I just got this participants. I don't see any hands raised there. Not you, Linda, you're. Who's, sorry, let's just lend it on the. Okay, a PTO report. Sure, if anybody's giving that. No, we had a very thorough report last meeting, so that's okay. No, okay, all right, move on to our business firing discussion, um appointing approvers. I swear we just.
We just switched like last month, so.
Okay.
I'm fine with keeping it.
So I think we should just keep it. I, what this is is for Gina, so. Um basically for all of the payroll and AP and whatnot, someone has to approve it. So we both. We split it between Norwich and Dresden folks and we basically every few months will change that just because you do. It's not a huge deal, but you kind of monitor, you know, when you're checking your email. Once or. So you do that and then just say that you have to give it to the. Um and it's basically, I said you addressed it.
And before you're asked to do it, you can visit the business office and they'll take you through it and show you what you're looking at and what you're being asked to approve.
Yeah.
But that won't be changing those over now for a couple of years. Okay, we have a policy here. This is our sustainability policy. This is our first reading of this. We had discussed this. I forget, it was either, yeah, so you were the Dresden or both meetings. Uh for member, and we had actually last time, did we actually change the? Yes, so it's actually been changed and based on our comments on the Dresden, which is the sustainability in the context of the school system. For those of us in Norwich that might be catching up and not paying attention to what happened in Dresden, so we had the um plan. The climate action plan was, it's a great plan. It was presented and and um is now in the hands of the administration. And alongside of that, we have a policy here that we, that's that's what references the climate action plan here. Again, that is a sustainability policy that at least gives all of us, is what we were doing budgets, administrators, when we're looking at. Doing things with capital improvement plans and we're looking at things for our buildings that at least we're getting some. Um you know, steady guidance on how we should approach these things, um which is why we put kind of a definition of sustainability, both in this. Context of the school facilities as well as the curriculum. Uh there's some bullets here. This policy was uh written by some folks in the environmental club as well with their input over at the high school. Um and then we go through the facilities, the operations and the curriculum, which are kind of three of the pillars of the um of the long range plan.
And just, um if anyone's looking for the minutes of this, it was presented the SA, the SAU meeting. Yeah, so if you go to the SAU seventy minutes, um the environmental club presentation should be in there.
And the climate action plan will also be part of that.
Exactly.
You want to actually, that's a huge document and very well done. So again, this is the first reading. Um I'm not sure, do they might have any comments or changes from Norwich perspective?
I have a question.
Yes.
Are these aspirational goals or measurable goals? Like I was writing OKRs today, but I did, to me, these are more aspirational versus there's not a measured. Um outcome, like where it says continue with and expand current building and grounds. Is there like a goal of like ten percent increase efficiency? Or is it more, we just want to aspirationally improve sustainability?
Yeah, sure. I would say this policy is more aspirational. The actual climate action plan does have metrics in it.
Okay.
Um and and some targets and they were very careful to not bind the board. Um they use the term. Uh fiscally responsible throughout the document because you you may have to make decisions like this board did. Uh they had to choose between a very expensive geothermal system. Um when upgrading our heating system, um or something not quite as sustainable, but but they actually went from oil to propane. So sort of uh half, half measure, but the other was important. So it was a work within the budget.
Thank you.
Yeah, that's. That's fair. Yeah, again, Jason, I mean, I think, you know, we have reviewed this in policy committee as well, the um. The environmental club actually drafted a lot of the bullets and redrafted a lot of it as well and. Um I think we all should be trying to put some commitments in there, but also not make it. I mean, I think everyone's just kind of in the budgets and the fact that some things just aren't. We do the best we can. We all have a teaspoon full of plastic in our brains at this point. We need to make definitive actions here. At least that's my personal, you know, this, that was. Start to get things more measured, but Gina's. Okay, any comments on this policy? We'll bring it back for a second read and adoption at the next meeting. Okay. Onto the school calendar. So I believe this is, we are be, we will be approving the calendar in our. This current action, this is our last time. This calendar has. Been through many reviews. Uh for Janice and anyone else listening, so obviously we also have had the calendar committee and this calendar, I'll just say one more time, does not have. Those color coded ones, which are a lot of the other um holidays that are observed by. Um various folks and those are going to be on a separate calendar, right, Jay, to at least allow teachers and everyone to be aware of. What days those are as far as. Um, you know, homework levels, tests, that kind of thing. But this calendar here is really our. Calendar hasn't changed much over the years and it's really kind of in line with most of the, basically directly in line with all the other holidays.
Uh I would just note before we publish it that I believe there's a typo in August. Says the twenty sixth to the twenty sixth. Just, just to save someone ten emails when I turn it. Nice catch, thank you. Um at previous, multiple previous meetings, I expressed my rumpiness of a two week holiday. A lot of stress out of your time. Really long break. Get those kids back to school, but that's it. We'll be voting to approve it this.
And just to say it out loud one more time for people who plan far, far ahead for their vacations. The February vacation week shifts in this calendar. It is no longer the third week of February, it's the fourth week of February and I don't want people caught off guard. Um by that, so I think the more we can draw attention to that, the better it will be. Because I think it's, it's the first time since my kids have been in school that that's the case.
I think people might be excited because playing fairs will be cheaper a week later.
Well, half the state does it a week later, so it depends on where you fly out of.
Yeah, that's true.
Uh as I say, it's not, Massachusetts is always President's Day, so we will not be.
Yeah, so we'll be seeing.
I just want to reassure the board that we, we got the final, we moved part third. Calendar, which we tried to align with and we're setting it. Yeah, they didn't change anything major.
Yeah.
Um I would just add, and I've said this before in other districts, um. Uh while uh there's some people that are going to be very happy about that change in the February break, I want to note a couple of things. One. Um not necessarily particular to the Norwich board, but particularly all the Norwich board members that are here. Uh this is going to push the Dresden informational meeting to Saturday, the twenty eighth. The other thing that I will note, um that is our, our wonderful prior report member, Willie Trina. Um had gone to the select board this past year looking to see if they could change the informational meeting. For town meeting to the Saturday before voting day, which would also then potentially move the informational meeting and the Norwich budget presentation. To Saturday, the twenty eighth. So if board members at this table plan on taking that vacation and taking it all the way through Saturday, the twenty eighth, there could be problems. With that. The last thing that I will note is that the state is considering a universal statewide calendar for the school year. So next year, we may not be deciding this by ourselves.
Eric Ross, with different vacation than middle school and high school?
I think that depends on what the middle and high school want to do. It'll be statewide, so we'll still be launching to Harvard. So we should do that.
Um yeah, I, as far as the journal, as far as the meeting goes, I don't, you know.
I think it's going to be a problem.
That is going to be, I mean, it probably is going to be a problem. Um. Yeah. And it can't, that can't be done like a week out like on the nineteenth.
It's, it has a. It can't be more than X number of days or less than X number of days, so it's a little um. I'll, I'll consult with Ryan on that again, just to double check, but I'm sure you don't have much choice.
We, it's because we don't have much choice in Dresden compact. It's just, that compact specifically states that if. That last week in February is a break week, the the information people happen on Saturday. The select boards can decide, I think, almost whatever they want in terms of the informational meeting and we just go along with the ride.
Okay.
So um something that maybe keep in mind and notice that we.
I'm sorry, this is the Hannover select.
No, this is the Norwich select board. So if you remember, Lily uh had made a pitch. That we move informational town meeting, the thing that happened on Monday night to Saturday. To allow for potentially greater participation of the town to be able to participate in in that.
Okay, I'm sorry.
And if we have. Uh school break week that last week in February and the select board decides to move the information meeting from Monday night. To Saturday, that will have an impact.
Okay, I'm sorry. I thought this was the, I thought this was the Dresden thing where we met like last Thursday night.
It's both, it's both.
Because they typically have that up on Thursday.
I thought you were talking about that would be on Saturday. But in the event, so the Dresden compact says, in the event school break week falls that last week in February, the informational meeting will be on that Saturday.
Rather than Thursday.
This is not making sense.
Rather than Thursday.
Right, which is what it usually is.
Just a bit of clarification, you're like, are you sure it's the compact or the articles?
Sorry, the articles. Ah, so we can modify it. Dresden can modify their.
And then I think, I guess Ross thought this is, it would make absolutely no sense for the town of Norwich that the information was, why would they not just keep it on Monday? Next year.
Uh Lily's point that she brought to the select board, where she thought that it could encourage additional participation. If the meeting was moved to perhaps Saturday afternoon and maybe they provided childcare.
Okay, but I think next year, given the fact that it's kind of Norwich and mostly be on vacation, that that would probably not be a great idea.
And and I don't disagree with you, I just think that keep your eyes open on what the select board is considering this year.
I don't know, I think that we should probably maybe reach out to select board history as well. Okay, Michael.
So, so just to make sure we're on the same page. Uh the two things that we'll keep an eye on are. One, uh if we want to amend the articles of agreement. Because we caused a situation where a meeting will be held the Saturday of school break week, which seems so optimal. And discussing the business in the school district. And two, we'll keep our, an eye on our local select board to see if they want to move off that Monday. One of the arguments is for increased participation, having. Many school age families out of town will cut against all the merits of that proposal. I'll leave it to the administrative staff to bring back the articles of agreement issue. I just made a note for Ryan in all caps with your question. Thank you, Jake.
And sorry, I'm just gonna go with one more question here, Neil, and what do you think? Hannover will do for their Dresden Hannover meeting? Will they read the? More articles and whatnot. You think that they'll still do that on that Thursday vacation week or would they do that? I made a smart Jay question because that's Hannover Dresden, right? And that's where.
I would highly doubt it because now that meeting, it, I don't, I don't think they would do that because they're, they're likely to be on vacation as well.
Right, so can they do that the week prior, I guess?
I, I don't think so. I think. There was a, I I recall when this conversation came up when I first got here, I think that you had meetings on Saturdays before, or at least. In Hannover they had. And there was displeasure around that.
Well, maybe one other idea is to do it on Sunday. Because most people.
Yeah, sorry, so just to be, I was only raising it as an informational point for board members to just have in the back of their heads tonight. Um we would change our vote on the calendar.
Okay. All right. So we all do honors. We'll be here until ten o'clock on your information week. Uh okay. Any other discussion on the calendar? Any comments you can public? All right, this crash and I believe we can go through items B three by consent. Do you have a motion? Michael?
I moved it to be approved items B three by consent.
Second. Lisa. All those in favor? That's unanimous?
I've got one.
Yeah.
I'm official.
Just to, to the point, I, I hate to be a narrator, but just, just so you know, so, so the board often um approves all action items that we, that's called a consent motion.
Okay.
Just lump them together. If there's something special on there, or some, sometimes there might be a donation that we want to say, say a special thank you. You can separate. Individual items from that motion. Um but, but we've done that really tax, but I. The, the meeting agenda.
Not to be a picky person, but since I wasn't at the meetings with the minutes, should I abstain? Because for me to approve minutes for things I wasn't at, and another board that.
You didn't go out and listen to the Zoom?
Yeah.
Yeah, so it's not required. Uh the, the, the board vote on the minutes is really just an acknowledgement that minutes were taken. And then as best you know, it fairly uh represents what happened at the meeting.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay, now we'll move on to our reports. Report of the chair, I'll keep mine short. I just want to thank the public for voting um our school budget forward this year. I know it was a lot of work. I know, you know, there are townspeople inevitably where it's a lot of money and taxes are. Uh a burp are difficult. Um I do think that we did a very good job as a. Board and as administration, I will say again, of keeping that budget to the absolute minimum and. Really a flat, if even according to our budget guidelines, it was actually slightly down for the. Non, for all the educational items. Um and as I always say, a flat budget is actually a down budget when you are facing healthcare increases and. Steps and all that kind of thing for salaries and whatnot and just the general cost of things going up certainly, so. Um, sorry, Michael.
Go ahead.
But after your agenda.
Oh. Um and then I think the other thing, I'm obviously welcoming Gina, I think, uh you know, I am happy having been on the board now for many years, for several years, that we. Continue to get good people to come to the board with a wide range of skills and I think Gina's going to be right there. With us, contributing um and helping us all with different perspectives. I think if you look down this board with. You know, Lily leaving us, but everyone on this board, um I think it's, it's a great group to work with. I enjoyed coming to these meetings personally. Um and interacting with administration, the board members, and it's always great too, because everyone has a lot of different expertise. I go and talk to my wife after and I touch, say, I have no idea that this person will do these types of things and. Deals with this and their day jobs that actually helped us at our meetings, so um that was my report. Oh, sorry, and I think the last thing I'll do is number three. Um I think at some point I always say this, but if we do want to have other topics. This is probably the time of year to do it. Last year, we did spend a little bit of time, for example, we had kind of a teaching on budget process. Um it might be a good time to start to do this for another couple of months if we have specific things that we want to do. Um I'll ask Neil, but you had told me a couple of months ago and I kind of put it on the back burner because of budget season, but. There are some board specific things that are, of course, we met, I didn't have a board in a couple of years, as we go on five S and U's, but. We just, we do need to pay attention to that.
We, we want to be talking about district quality standards that go into effect by one.
So why don't we, would it be worth it to dedicate part of a meeting to that doing? Thank you. District quality standards, but I can maybe just reach. You know, I can just start a quick call or talk about who might have the stars. What, and that is the agenda topic. Rather than just kind of call district quality standards and maybe. Rather than just kind of call district quality standards and maybe. A little bit of calls to talk a little bit of. But actually, that's kind of, is, is part of the board member training that we do and the, the chair meeting training. I always take this to heart that like our board meetings, we can use them as working sessions for different things. So it doesn't just have to be this agenda and we're giving this. Usually by the summertime, we end up getting into all of the normal workings and a lot of other things take the time, but at least since early spring to early summer, we do some control and fire. So that's my thing. So Michael, you had a question first?
Uh, just two good comments. Um. You know, thank you very much to Neil for once again doing a presentation, uh, meeting. Uh, you know, obviously we really well done, it's very accessible. It's not easy to keep in the robust education finance system. And the results from the votes, which were strong, uh, vote confidence in our school system. And to, um, you, since the, there were very few questions at the meeting that Tracy Hall. Uh, we only very quickly said the other component of the budget, which is us being able to bring a reasonable budget that only has modest increases in a year where we had two separate labor agreements means that we've got in common ground with our staff and with our teachers. So a big thank you once again for that, being good partners, and most importantly, being, you know, the key motors to our items to maintain. Uh, when you talk about topics, Garrett, I would just say, I want some way, this is just my opinion, for us to help keep the public informed on what's going on with, uh, education reform in Montpelier. But I want to do that in like a town, time bound in a specific way. Cause you could spend two hours with a lot of anxiety and speculation about what's going on a month later. In my brain, I'm trying to figure out what's going on right now. Uh, what do you think is gonna happen in the very near future? And what's gonna happen like further future? Like, what are we thinking for the summer and next year? So I just think maybe, um, for the next couple of meetings, the ten or fifteen minutes on here's the state of play and here's what we're doing about it. As an educational function without somehow getting sucked into an hour or two hours of anxiety and swirl. Uh, what could happen other than that?
Yeah, what, what I can do too, maybe is before the next two meetings, um, again, I know, you know, it's all a bit is active as well. And also probably reach out to our state reps just for any updates. We are, we, we are having, and they've canceled the pack. They didn't have one. I asked you, you know, we haven't had one recently, just because things have constantly changed, but we have been having um, myself and Neil looking on call this every other Thursday. And this is Monday, every Monday afternoon. So I'm assuming you might have got it. That would be also a good time to just break the waters. Okay, uh, Gina, you had a question?
Let's, I'm gonna build on Michael's, but when I was getting my petition signed to run, multiple parents asked me how is what's happening in Montpelier going to affect us being the Dresden school district? And just that, I think, ten people asked me that question and I didn't know how to answer it. Um, just wanna flag that, cause that's hot on people's mind. I'm sure you all know that. Yeah.
So toward that end, uh, at the last Dresden meeting, Neil, I believe it was an actual motion, uh, tasked the administration with uh, retaining legal counsel to sort of preemptively, um, monitor what's happening in Montpelier and really from the perspective of how does it impact Dresden and our participation in the, um, in the interstate school district. So I had, I had that initial conversation with Dean Agger two days ago, and then we had a follow up this morning. And so the key is gonna be putting together um, essentially an analysis of the proposals that are out there right now and, and then balance that against the, the provisions within the interstate agreement that may either conflict with plans that are being developed at this, at the, at the Vermont level. And also what he's calling opportunities. He thought it might actually be some opportunities in it, depending on what they decide to do with the interstate, interstate district they operate. Um, so I can make that a regular report out as Dean gathers that information and bring it back to you. Thank you.
Thank you. Yeah, um, just on the topic of topics, um, I think having something that is a, an educational session or a forum about what's happening in Montpelier and also what's happening in New Hampshire that affects our kids who are at the middle school and high school makes sense. Um, but in addition, at least the emails that I received as, as a new chair are concerned about sort of what's swirling in the air nationally. And it occurs to me that one way to talk about that without raising people's anxiety would be to have an educational session like we did about the budget, about how curriculum decisions get made. Um, and sort of what the board's role is in terms of overarching policy and then how the principals interpret that and then how the teachers interpret that and then how it gets trickled down to the parents. And it just, it feels as if that just might be a good way to, um, help people understand how this works and who has the power over what happens in a classroom and, um, and who does not. And so, um, just, I would suggest that as an educational opportunity.
All right. Anything else? On my report? And you might, there's comments on us why you were the vice chair. Cover some points I. That I missed for very important. Uh, okay, on to the principal report, Sean.
So yeah, provided our report that talks about more positions that were either different or new this past year is giving you some information about where they're at. But take questions about that. Two things that didn't make this report. Uh, one, this evening, the first grade posted their annual diet load strategy ends up. It was a lot of fun, there's a lot of singing and, you know, dangerous dinosaurs floating about, or something about, I should say. Which is a great event. And second, the PTO and, uh, school are partnering with Rebecca Open for our next coffee chat, which is April eighth, Rebecca has agreed to come and talk about, uh, some of the changes in education and her perspective and answering questions. So that should be one way that we can give to the. Population wise, we gained one student, so we had three hundred and twenty four. We're at three hundred and twenty three last month. And anyone have questions about? How did the, the.
It's an excellent update. It was, it was, it's really useful to see that, um, just even regards to you know, budgeting and what we're considering. So it's very helpful. Um, does anybody have any questions or comments for Sean?
Great. Thank you, Sean. Super good. Okay. Um, on to, first here, Jay Superintendent's report.
Defer my colleague, Robin.
Hey, I submitted my report and I am happy to answer any questions, but I did note the federal funds that we currently receive for Marion Toss, which is an idea, anything happens to those. And we have been keeping an eye on that. And then we had our ELA meeting today, which was great. Looking through teaching, reading and writing. And so we finished that up today and we're looking at ELA blocks coming up and will be starting to deliver resources and hopefully develop a plan for budgeting for next school year for ELA resources. So that work has been progressing since last spring. And for me, it's just really valuable to me and the group. And so they're just enthusiastic and excited about partying. And so every time I meet with them, it's just such a pleasure. So I just kudos to them. They are volunteering all of this time after school and it's been really valuable for me. And that's it.
Any questions for? That's there, um, I'm sorry. Yeah.
Yes.
Do we, um, two questions. Do we anticipate? Title one, well, um, will we meet the threshold in the future?
Yes, we will meet it for next year. I know that we, we've gotten the information back and we will be over two percent of that. Very reduced lunch, so.
And is it, yeah, and is it too soon to know about these other federal funds?
Well, there's good and bad with us receiving title one, because we did not receive title one this year. We will not receive title four next year. And that's $10,000 that every year we really do put to good use. Um, but we have been receiving some additional funds, you know, halfway through the year and end up having rollover funds. So I'm hoping that that happens next year. I did receive information actually today about, yesterday about our SRS A fund. Um, that looks like we will be receiving about the same amount for next year in that fund. So we'll see. It's it's up a year and it changes for us every year. And it seems like we lose funds every year.
Right.
So.
And when going into the next round of budgeting, should I mean, we can add this discussion again, right? In, in August, July, but if we should be assuming that revenue will be down.
Yeah, and I'll have a better idea once we get to June, July. I'll start working on writing those in around July. But for us too, because title two is mostly professional development funds. We have some of those funds within the school's budget already. So it just allows us students and other things we might not be able to do. Um, and for title one, again, it's, we're, we have such a small pop, population of title one students, but we really have to target that. And so, you know, it's nice to have, but if we didn't have it, would it be critical for us to run the school? I would say no, but it does provide us with some really nice additional materials and training and all those things.
What is title four funding? I think I understand what one and two are what it's for.
Title four is for different things like technology, well-rounded education. For example, this year we're using some of that funding. Actually, Julian and Caitlin run an after-school program. And so that funds that program for students after school. We have funded some technology through our title four funding, like, um, we've funded some of our high-ready program in the past. We've funded things like some are science online programs. So we can use it for different things like that after-school programs. And other schools I've used it to fund musical instruments when we had higher numbers and classes. Um, so really it's, that one is, we can use it for so many different things. Yeah, it's nice to have.
Thanks. And Jake, keep me honest, but just a little bit of running commentary that he says, so title one and title two are mostly based on income levels and need of your student base.
Yeah.
So when we were doing the budget a couple of years ago, we were dealing with all of the, the new student counts, one of the things that Jay pointed correctly. So you ran a whole spreadsheet because it's all public as far as what all basically, all the title two, title, title one, title two and title four funding amounts were for every district in the state of Vermont. And there are some districts that are, I mean, there's a million dollars going to some of those districts. And to our point, that was not part of the uh, education funding. We're no, they're getting that money plus they're getting the adjusted, you know, issues of the student accounts, right? So it was kind of like, hey, this is something you might wanna think about. Of course, now it might be a bit of a moot point, especially if most of it goes away, um, at the federal level.
Right. And even title four, we've received the minimal amount type of four funding that a school can receive, which is $10,000. And that's for each of our schools. So it gives you an idea how little we've received in comparison to other schools.
Is the block grant or special ed at all at risk? Or is that?
That's, yeah.
That's okay.
That, that should be fine, but.
Okay, well, the federal IDBA funding, who knows?
Yeah, I know. That doesn't seem quite as volatile as where they're funding.
Yeah. Michael?
Um, so I've listened to you talk about your skill in getting grant funding over the years. Um, I do understand that we don't qualify for a lot of federal funding. My understanding is that there are other school districts in Vermont that qualify for substantial federal funding.
Yes.
Is one of your concerns that in the reshuffle once the finance system, the feds retract their support, more state support will flow out of the more rich to back those of those fed dollars? Or has that not been part of the conversation so long?
That has not been part of the conversation as far as I know thus far, but who knows that?
There's a lot of speculation.
Yeah.
I, I think it's, I think it's very well founded and speculative.
Yeah. So.
And I ask, well, because I, you know, I'm in healthcare, which is also under pressure right now. And so there are very quiet discussions about, hey, what happens if $250 million in Medicaid money disappears? How does that get reallocated within the hospital healthcare system? And, uh, you know, it, it'd be very, you'd have to make some very tough decisions about this stuff down there, which is not always a synthetic part of state funding.
Right. Now, and you know, I've applied for some things that we haven't gotten. It's because Eric feel like we have adequate funding, so.
Yeah. Thank you.
Other questions? So you have any? Okay, on to the business administration report. Um, Teresa, are you?
Yes, I want to mention that.
Sorry, did you hear something first?
Well, I think.
Oh, I thought that, I thought that you were just.
Oh, no, no, I wasn't. No, mine will be very, very fast. I, I just. I have, I already, um, had, had shared a copy of testimony I gave on Valentine's Day before the House, uh, Education Committee. Uh, as, as was alluded to earlier, we have been talking with our legislature, our, our local legislators about proposed changes and consolidations. And I can share a story about my experience in consolidation in Pennsylvania and, uh, was asked to go speak to the House Education Committee. And we had a over an hour long conversation about the absolute lack of data that appears to have been used in deciding the five districts, um. And, uh, how simple it would be to actually use data to figure out what makes the most sense in terms of consolidation and how readily available that that is. I concluded that, um, it's available probably as well.
Thank you. Okay, now. Again, Teresa, Teresa, thanks for coming. I think, again, writing commentary is being a little bit, um. We, uh, Jamie is also online, so she's also been a administrator. Jamie is going to, I think, be stepping um, aside, aside this year and Teresa's gonna become our main contact for this. And we're gonna be relying on Teresa's expertise now for this next fiscal year. We can try to, anyways, over to you, Teresa.
Okay, thank you. Um, so I did bring the manifest. Um, there was a little more than what seems like normal because I think last month, maybe I was sick, so I didn't, they didn't make it over yet. Um, but the only thing, the thing I wanna mention is that we also have literally the document that Jamie and I put together. Um, just kind of highlighting the different departments. Um, just custodial, maintenance department, the food service happenings, what's happening with the business in the finance office. Um, I do wanna mention that the audit is in statistically, it's final draft, but, um, it's just time, there's still a couple of legal documentation that before they release it to us. Um, you know, those six, those letters in their hands before. So we're just waiting on that to happen. Um, I do wanna mention that last week, the town of Norwich, um, paid the second half of the finals, so we just received $7.1 million. Um, which equals us, well, even for the end, you know, the rest of the school year here, then we received all the funds, um. And you know that Robin worked on a LEHI grant that, um, here at the school, the staff room had some renovation time, good energy out. So LEHI, um, awarded about $15,000 in the mail. So it's kind of nice that, um, they were able to bring in paint, new furniture and everything for the staff room here. Then transportation is the only other thing. So they won't read all through the document out to go through it.
Could I provide just a little bit of follow-up on food service? This is Jamie. I'm sorry I'm not with you there tonight. You're in capable hands with Teresa and, uh, welcome to Gina. Um, the actual state of Vermont sent out an email this afternoon encouraging all business administrators in the state to file their food service claims by this afternoon, because there is some concern that if you did not get your claims in by today through February. If you did not get your claims in by today through February, that there may be. Um. Uh, a holdup on getting reimbursements out from the feds to the states. With what's going on in Washington. So it it is starting to become real, some of the changes that they're. Uh, making and some of the orders that they're passing. So we filed our February claim today, so ours should be fine. Um, depending on what happens on March fourteenth. We'll see what happens with the March and April claims, but we'll keep you posted. Uh, other than that, Teresa, I think touched on everything and we'll bring the governance letter to the next meeting. Thank you.
Um, and so it sounds like granted, the septic is good now. So I know we had a few issues with some of some smells and whatnot, but it seems like all of that Tony and his team has.
Yes.
Figured out the cause and fixed it and.
That part seems to be, there are some going back and forth a little more with the boiler.
Okay.
There's some things that they're still working on. Um, there's a little description in there regarding that.
But that septic thing was kind of an ongoing.
That's my knowledge.
It seems like that's been.
All in control.
Okay. Um. Sorry, committee reports, do we have any reports of remedies? Did you address in um, the middle school sports division?
Yes, it did. Yeah.
Yeah, excuse me. Here, I just asked you a question. Um. Teresa, we've got. Are there three here?
There should be four.
Four, okay.
Neil, can you pass this down to Michael? He has to leave in about a minute. Um, so you can sign him first, if that's okay? Thank you. This would seem better than having to have that tracked down. Thank you.
Um, I think that so there are no committee reports. Um, at this point. We can sign these and uh, we'll be moving into executive session. Uh, and the purpose of our executive session tonight is to. Personnel, so we have a motion to enter into executive session. So you just read.
You have to read it.
Exact detail.
I would like to make a motion to enter into executive session in accordance to Title One, Section three thirteen. The purpose of discussing appointment of employees.
Great, perfect. Go to the second. Lisa, I'll call the favor. Right, that is unanimous. So we'll be moving into executive session. Uh, for the public will be coming back out, we will be approving our nomination list. Uh, so I don't think there's really anything. To stick around for. to stick around for. All right, the public session a little before eight. We are not going to need to, uh, nomination. We're doing that in April, so we do not need to prove that tonight. At this point, we will, who's got the agenda topics for the next meeting? I think we actually did a number of agenda topics, which I'll find most, but a number of things to. On that, do I have a motion to adjourn? Actually, sorry, for the record, Michael left.
Thank you. That's what I was gonna say.
Previous to our non-public session. So Michael Coste is not here. So, okay, so do you have a motion to adjourn? We'll leave it to Gina.
I move to adjourn. I'll send it, just being consistent.
All those in favor? All right.
I'm sorry.
Unanimous at 7:57. Wow. Gina's first name.
Good luck, first.
All right, thank you all. Let's see.
Thank you for the warm welcome. Any.